Well, good evening. Welcome to the Deerfield, Town of Deerfield Select Board and Board of Health meeting at 5:02. Trevor, can you read this meeting ID and passcode number?
Yep. So meetings normally held at the municipal offices are being held remotely with adequate alternative means of public access and where required public participation provided in accordance with the Governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. Meetings are typically broadcast on frontier community access television. Remote meeting connections are listed below. You can always find our agenda on the town website. On the front page, bottom right where the calendar is, you'll see upcoming meetings. You can click on this meeting and you will see our agenda. And that agenda has a dial-in number for those watching and want to call in for comment. The number is 312-626-6799. The meeting ID is 911-604-1580. And should you need a passcode, it's 570012. Below that, you'll see a link for this meeting on Zoom, which you've probably clicked on to get here. So meeting attendees should mute their phones, which is star six for landlines unless asking a question or commenting. All attendees should wait to speak until other participants are finished. Welcome to this meeting.
Thank you, Trevor. Would the school committee like to call their meeting to order?
I guess that's me, huh, Darius?
We don't, we do not have a quorum.
We do not have a quorum, no.
There's only four of us here.
Okay. Won't be called to order. We'll chime in if you have any thoughts.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Well, we're here to consider the sports volleyball, soccer, and football. And soccer and volleyball are considered moderate risk and football is considered high risk. Soccer and football are outside, which is really wonderful. And volleyball is inside. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Carl. He can tell you all the details. But even though volleyball is inside, it is, it is, we gotta be quiet. You, you, you are not switching sides inside. The kids are wiping the balls down and there will be no spectators. Outside for football, my major concern was locker room exposure because over the last few months, it's shown that locker room is one of the chances for more socialization and, and more contained group is where they get, you get transmissions. So Carl has reassured me that kids that are remote are bringing your own gear. And the rest of the kids are going to come to, to football with their gear already on. There will be no locker rooms use. And we need to keep, can make that consistent and right along because the locker room is where it happens. For soccer, the meeting I had today, I asked what the soccer risk was from the fall experience. And it turns out that most of the clusters related to soccer in the fall were related from carpooling and getting to games. So again, if parents can drive the kids and very limited use of buses so that, you know, the kids aren't together. I think soccer can be handled as a moderate risk sport to be handled really well. We will be allowing spectators for soccer games, home spectators only, not away spectators. We're going to have limited to households though, and then space between the households. So parents have got to really pay attention to how they're standing along the sidelines and make sure households are being segregated and spaced appropriately. I have to say that I feel very comfortable with our numbers and also the track record of the kids. The kids have shown over the history of a more high-risk sport like basketball that they have a commitment to really pay attention and, and keep their masks on and do as much protocol and, and best practices as possible. So having, I feel very comfortable that the kids will be equally willing to commit. And because if we have a cluster, we have to shut them down. So this, this, I mean, I feel like the kids could go ahead. So it is my recommendation after you ask Carl any questions that we would probably go forth with this. So Carl, would you just cover a few of the things that I missed on what you're doing for protocol?
Sure. So volleyball, we would basically run the way we did basketball in terms of setting up the games and sanitizing and all those kinds of things. Obviously following anything different in the guidelines, if there are any, but being a less of a risk sport. You know, I think a lot of the concerns in that sense are not there. You know, we'll still have the doors open and go beyond what was asked, you know, what you had asked us for basketball and continue with those things because it seemed to work. And I will say, one of the officials did give us a compliment near the end of the season saying like, you guys really have it together in terms of making sure kids sanitize and stuff like that. So that was a positive thing because they've been to other schools. And I'm happy to be the school that they're like, oh, they're tough on us about this. So volleyball will be like basketball in that sense. Football, we did talk about the lockers, like right now, any kids that are in school. Scott Dredge has a spot for them to drop their stuff off that's not in the locker room. So there's nobody, there's no like changing in an area where they're kind of all mixing. We've avoided that. The carpool thing, I know, Missy, I think you had asked the last meeting about if that would continue, the load numbers on the bus would continue. You know, the next week or so, we're going to have that survey kind of go out so we can decide if we need one bus or two buses. And one thing that I did stress to the basketball families was if they were going to ride, provide their own transportation, that they don't carpool with the other kids because that would defeat the whole purpose of, of doing the carpooling. And they did the right stuff. Let's cut that. I think that's kind of the gist of it. Unless people have questions, I think that might be the easier way to go about it. Yeah.
This is Trevor McDaniel. I'm really proud of how you ran, ran the basketball and how the kids are doing everything. And I just, I think we, our numbers obviously show that you guys are doing a great job and very, very appreciative for that. We're all nervous as can be, but it does seem like everybody's doing, doing the right things because they want to play and, and they want their kids to play. So they're following the rules. So I have no issue. I feel good about this. So.
Are we allowing spectators for football?
Yes, yes. Football and soccer can have home spectators only.
Not volleyball, correct?
Right, right. And we just have to have parents and spectators pay attention so that they are spacing between households. In other words, if you have parents and siblings, they can be together, but they can't be, they need to be spaced appropriate next to another household, you know, another family, that kind of thing. Grandparents, if they don't live in the household, then they need to stay separate from the parent. I know it is very difficult. People are starting to get vaccinated now. But we have a lot of issues with variants potentially, and it is really important that we stay on top of this. And there has been no transmissions in the school and we've got to keep it that way. And I, and I think the kids, I mean, I am just so proud of all this, you know, what's happening in the schools because everybody is paying attention. There's, it really hasn't been any real lapses. And, and so I think we should go ahead. And I, I'm just starting out there that we are voting in the future to go ahead with the prom and all that. But the planning can go ahead because I've already been to two meetings where the prom protocols are supposed to be discussed. And Desi has not come out with any guidelines at all. And so it's been disappointing. And I, I told Scott that just, you know, start the planning. I, I think people are taking this seriously. And their masquerade idea and being outside, I think is, from all indications, it's still aerosol-based. Yes, you can probably pick it up from the surfaces, but it's not really what we're concerned about. It's being aerosol. So anything that we can do to eliminate or reduce aerosol is, is really important. But as the weather warms up and you can get outside, you know, the risk is becoming very much less. And so even though football is considered high sport, high risk, one of the things that we were able to discuss just today, as a matter of fact, is everything is being taped by FCAT. And so you could go through and watch the game and you could see the cumulative time, total time that the kids have next to each other. So if there was a case, you could, you could contact trace off the tape. It's very hard in the, in a, in a game to be able to say, well, who was I next for 15 total minutes or whatever it is. And this is one way that we could do it. Contact tracing has remained and is the best number one way to contain. So with FCAT taping this live and us having the ability to look at the tapes, we should be able to identify anybody that if there is a case, we should be able to contact trace it right away. So, I mean, I do feel pretty comfortable about that. Is there anybody that had any questions? Missy?
Yeah, I just wondered if there was further guidance on spectators. I, I hear some, some guidelines so far for home visitor, for, for home spectators only and for people congregating by household. But is that limited to any number?
Well, the thing is, by the time we have games, I think we're going to be in the next phase. We're in, you know, the phase right now, if you're outside, there isn't that many, the limit is, is higher than we want. So that's not an issue. And I think we're going to go into the next phase. So by the end of the month, and that talks about, then you can have away spectate, you know, your, the other team's spectators. But I'm, I'm really not too excited about that because that's additional opportunities that we might have to trace and it will be very hard to get names. Whereas if we're keeping it to home, home spectators only and you're by households, people kind of remember who they're standing by or who they're sitting by. And that's really, really critical for the contact tracing. So I'm kind of limiting it to that, even though there isn't any other, I mean, it's, it's a stricter guideline actually. And same as the locker room, the locker room guidelines, we're just saying we don't want it in the locker room. It's just, it's the opportunity of, you know, I mean, it's really sad to say because you do want your kids to be socializing. You do want your kids to have fun. But it's clear from, you know, what was happening in hockey and all the clusters. If you trace them back, they went right back to the locker room. So as the Board of Health, I'm recommending that we still do not use the locker room as, and, and that opportunity is there for contained aerosols that might be infectious to other people. So we're actually, we're actually strict. No, the number, there's 25 kids on a team. So if you had a household, a couple of parents and siblings or grandparents, I mean, you're probably talking around 50 spectators. That's still way below the limit.
That, that's what I'm clarifying. Households of people that are on the team, not friends or other people who may want to come watch. That's what I'd just like to clarify.
Yeah, we're trying to discourage that.
I'll just jump in here, like we did in the fall with field hockey. I basically created a spreadsheet that was shared with the families and they filled in the phone number, their name and, and who's going to be there. And I had basically took attendance on the way in. And if they weren't on the list, they didn't come in. So.
And that's why, and that's why we're really limiting it to home spectators. Because the, the effort to, for Carl to try to track down, you know, the other teams, spectators, you know. And the games are being all in Franklin County. This, this is not going lower county, you know, lower valley at all. This is, you know, the Franklin County and Franklin County numbers are very good. So I feel pretty confident that we'll be okay as long as the protocols are followed. And I, based on the kids' performance so far, I would say they're more than willing to participate and, you know, have a commitment to follow the guidelines.
Olivia has a question.
I think Carl pretty much answered it. I was just wanting to know how, because contact tracing is so important. How we're going to keep track of, you know, who was coming and going, if it was family members or, you know, if kids wanted to come watch their friends and that sort of thing, just because that's hard to keep track of. But as long as we know who those people are.
Yeah. No, Carl is, Carl's, the way Carl is doing it is, it's a little bit onerous. But honestly, it's 100% can't contain. And if we had an exposure and that we were worried about it, we could be on it within a day. And that's the whole point is, you know, we've been working really, really hard to make sure we're responding within 24 hours. Everything has been contained and contact tracing contained. And so I feel like the system worked and that's what we need to do is keep working with the system, what we had so far that was effective.
Excellent. And the same as basketball, there'll be no one inside watching the volleyball games. Is that true?
No, no, I do not feel comfortable with that. FCAT will be taping them live. And I'm, I know parents are discouraged that they can't come in. And we might even do, you know, if our numbers are still remain good, we probably will do a senior night kind of thing like we did for basketball. But having that contained room, even though it's a large space, you don't want, you want to keep the number of the actual people low as possible. And that keeps our risk as low as possible. So if there.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So a motion to, to approve the spring sports, I think they're calling spring.
It's winter, too. It's, I think it's, it's soccer, volleyball, and football.
Okay. So make a motion for winter two sports to move forward based on the protocols that have been set out by the administration.
Dave Wolf from second.
Is there any further discussion?
I only have one question for Carl. Are any of the helmets on the football team have clear shields on them?
They do not have clear shields, but the, was it like the Booster Club is buying all of the kids, the full, like, everything mask, double layered. Like it's part of their, you know, like it won't come off when they take their helmet off. So like, is, was it called the, I don't know, Balakava? Is that what it's called? I almost said baklava. That would have been wrong. Right?
You're making me hungry.
Yeah, it's all one piece. So it's like their mask is, you know, attached to their face there in that sense.
Okay, great. That's good. Is there anything else before we go on? Yeah, Trevor, no?
Hi, Trevor McDaniel.
Hi, Dave Wolf.
Hi, Carolyn Ness.
Thank you.
Um, Bill, since you didn't call your, your school committee meeting, I guess you don't have to adjourn.
Yeah, I guess we never had a quorum, so we were never really here.
Yeah. Oh, I've seen you.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
I, I, I just want to want everyone to know that I feel like the schools are doing an excellent, excellent job. And the cooperation, the level of cooperation has been outstanding. And Carl has been super, super patient with me because I harass him all the time. You know, what's, you know, what, what about this? What about that? And he's always has an answer and he's been wonderful. So, and it usually is the day of the meeting. Because I've gone to a meeting and I found out new information and then I got to harass him again. And so he's very patient. So thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good weekend.
Yeah. Bye-bye.
From this day, but I'm sure you can head out. Thank you.
Okay, we're a little ahead of the time, but I see that Chris Harris is here. He was here. Oh, yeah, here he is.
And he's not just on the phone this time.
Actually, I'm, I'm actually, I do exist, actually.
You do? Yes, welcome. So good to see you.
So Chris, were you waiting for anybody else or were you just doing this yourself?
No, I'm just doing it myself. I conferred with John Siz earlier, John Novae from Deerfield Historical Commission, et cetera. So.
Great.
Well, I, we can certainly, we'll talk about the money in just a minute. But why don't you go ahead for our audience and give us an overview of what you're trying to do?
Well, we kind of got alerted less than a week ago, about a week ago, that there is a grant program that has actually existed for a few years. It's called the Massachusetts State Historical Records Advisory Board. And they specifically are focused on preserving objects, sites, and collections of documents related to veterans in Massachusetts, strictly related to veterans. So this is very different than like Community Preservation Act, historical preservation and stuff like that. And so once we learned about this, you know, John Novae from the Deerfield Historical Commission, that all of me says, you, you think there's anything out there? I go, absolutely. I've been talking to John Siz about all these copious amounts of documents that we have going back 10, 20 years that have never been digitized, have never been archived electronically in an organized way where people from the public, students, researchers, family members can get at them. And it has to do with all the veterans' sites in cemeteries that we flag. It also has to do with a lot of research that was done in 2012 around the street sign project. And that's a big chunk of data. And so I said, yeah, absolutely. This is, I looked at some of the previous projects that were awarded grants. And I said, we're right in the ballgame. This is exactly what they want to do. They want to avoid losing all this history, these records due to fire, floods, what have you, or just loss paper. And when I said, I had already been thinking about this and talking to John about this, John Siz, that is, who does a lot of the veteran stuff in the town. And saying, this is a good project to get other volunteers. We're going to have to get some professionals in terms of the IT side of it. But yeah, students from Deerville Academy are frontier, their history to get involved in this, et cetera. And then now there's grant programs out there. And so that's why we quickly got it in front of the select board. Now, we did a little bit of work and Casey Warren is aware of this. That it doesn't seem like to be a core Deerfield Historical Commission project in that it's not your typical type of historical assets that they're usually worried about. So it really needs to be sponsored in our town at kind of the town of Deerfield Select Board level. But you've got support from all these other entities.
Okay. I'm, I'm absolutely in support of this. So do you want to just talk about the money? I'm, I'm wondering if this is eligible for CPA money.
I don't think it's eligible at all for CPA because we're not, because it's documents. So it's a whole different type of.
No, you can, you can archive, you can archive. We've done, our town meeting, I mean, our, our town records, we've been archiving under.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that. But I mean, we can look into that. I mean, that's, so the way I've structured it, I've done it like a budget, you know, with expense and, and, and funding, and they count volunteer hours as on both sides, right? So, so towards it, and they'll match up to 50% of what your project cost is with a maximum of 20,000 overall. So they'll match up to a $40,000 project. My best estimate is this is 17 to 18 grand. If I include the hours of volunteer at the rate that the state of Massachusetts gives, as well as there's some hardware, there's some software purchases. And we're inevitably going to have to have some IT professionals that will have to be paid. We'll get as much volunteer as we can in terms of the web and, and mobile app type programming and structure. So, so this, we go to the state for, let's say, 8,500 overall. And I had $2,000 of cash coming from the town. I can come from the town. But so far, that's all I have coming from the town directly.
So.
One time, one time.
So my question is, if it doesn't come from CPA, Casey, do we have a, a line item that we can fund this on? Or do we have to wait until July? Or what are we talking for? I don't know where we pull, we pull it from. It's the question. You're on mute though, sorry. You're muted.
If I didn't talk to myself so much, I wouldn't be muted, but I talked to myself. I was thinking of a couple of funding sources. I hadn't thought of CPA because it's been a while since I've worked in CPA. Asheville didn't have it. And I didn't have much of an intersect with them except for the park project last year. So I had thought of contracted services as a support because we do have grant support in there for one project. The other thing you could do is we could put the ask in, if the select board is championing, championing the project, perhaps put it through via the select board expense. Why don't you talk amongst yourselves for a minute while I look at something?
So I think I'm, I'm in, you know, in favor of the project. Obviously, I want to retain the records. I worry a lot about the records we have, you know, in the old senior center building, molding downstairs. You know, there's a lot in town that needs to get, you know, we need, we need storage whenever we build something so that we can store all this stuff correctly. And obviously digitally is, would be a lot better than building a space for it. But anyways, so I'm excited about the project. I think it has merit. I just want to find the right avenue of funding for, I mean, $2,000 is not a ton of money. But it's, it's got to be put in the right spot. So I just might need a little bit, you know, a couple of days to figure out where that go, where that comes from for match money. But it sounds like a great program. And I know based on your history, Chris, that you'll shepherd that through there.
I think this fits, I, I feel like this, yeah.
Did I lose you, Carolyn?
I, I feel like this is definitely, and of course, yeah, oh, yeah.
No, you're there. Go ahead. We can hear you.
Oh, now I'm okay again. Okay. I'm, I feel like it's, it's definitely CPA funded kind of project. And we should be able to, and the timing is perfect because they're taking applications. So.
Yeah. And so the application, the application deadline was March 1st. But I can get, I can ring Tim Hilschi and see because they got delayed to, they got delayed to their first review meeting of applications till March 18th.
So we might have time.
He might take it based on the fact that they did not have a review meeting yet.
Okay. Well, let's give pride. Yeah.
And I'll ring him, I'll ring him over the weekend, et cetera, just find out. And he also could come in as to whether it's appropriate.
Yeah. But she was saying our town meeting has been pushed off till June. So everything's shifting a bit. So.
If not, I don't, I'm sure we could try to figure out where we can get it.
Chris?
Yeah.
After, say this gets up and running.
I think we can do it. Dave, do you have any feeling on this, on how we should fund it?
Rocky was speaking.
Chris, after this is up and running and, you know, it's done and everything like that, in future years, would it just still be volunteer?
Rocky, we want to.
No, Carolyn, you're the one that's losing everybody. Your internet's cutting out. Go ahead, Rocky.
Okay. So in a few years, it would just be volunteers that would be still entering all this information to catch up.
Yeah, because, because, okay, yeah, because I think, I think Rocky, to your point, we're going to make the database with the latest technology and, and techniques of how you get this data in there. And then we don't expect a copious amount of information going forward. There could be families that donate veterans' records. So we could upload that. And, and there could be, you know, new veterans, you know, interred in our cemeteries, et cetera. But it's not a laborious amount of work and it could easily be maintained by volunteers.
All right.
Okay. You know, the way I look at it, we might not want to wait for a CPA vote to get this rolling.
Right, there's a deadline.
I'm thinking that, I don't know, you know, this is Casey's call more than mine, but the, that maybe look at contracted services and just apply to the finance board for a transfer.
Yep.
When's, Chris, when's the, the beginning of the grant period? Is it in fiscal '21? In other words, before June 30th or after July 1st?
I would assume it must be. I would assume it must be after July first. I don't know for a fact, but the deadline for getting applications and the drop dead is April ninth. So that tells me it's gotta be a fiscal.
Yeah, where they want to review it.
And, but they want, they actually want your preliminary application in by the fifteenth of March, so that they can go back and forth with you before the deadline.
The state started doing that. Yeah, that doesn't surprise me. So David, it's probably something we should plan for, for FY twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
So I'll check into it. I had mentioned it to Brenda, but we hadn't circled back around to it because we were working on CARES today.
It seems like we could find, find some sources somewhere between all of that somewhere, but, and, but let, let Chris move forward with the process.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, that sounds good. Do we need to vote on that, or just kind of, we, okay, so I would make a motion to, to approve um, uh, Chris Harris's um project moving forward with the um, Veterans Preservation Grant, um, and we will fund it either through contracted services or CPA funds, preferably CPA funds.
Dave Wolfram, a second?
I don't know if Carolyn's got us or not, but I'll, I'll just, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Dave Wolfram, aye.
Trevor McDaniel, aye. And I would guess we lost.
Is there any further discussion on this?
There we go. She's about twenty minutes behind us. Yes, we're good. Let's vote. Aye, Trevor McDaniel.
Aye, Dave Wolfram.
Aye.
Yay, we got her. Okay.
I'm here.
We got you, Carolyn. We got you. Thank you.
I, yes, yes. Yes, Carolyn is trying to say yes for five minutes.
We got you.
Oh, my God.
All right.
She must have had the computer in the back of the.
This is just an effort to keep me from talking. I know it, Trevor. It's, Dave is trying to keep the beat short.
Right, right, it is a right.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Thanks for all your help.
I know, I know, it's terrible. I can't believe this. Anyway, thank you. I know.
She, she is.
Announcements. Um, I do have an announcement. Maybe Trevor should read it. Oh, my God. Okay. Can you see this? This is, you've got to announce this.
We can't see you.
Try turn, turn in your camera off to see if it speeds your um load up. It's the.
All right, I'm going off the computer. Can, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Well, I'll make a couple of announcements, because I don't know who has up in front of her, but I'm just gonna do a couple.
Oh, man, okay. Um, can you hear me now? Oh, okay.
You're doing.
I just wanted to ma- announce that, um.
Isn't possible. Can you mute her for a moment?
I can, she'll yell at me.
I know, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Usually, her, her buffering isn't this bad.
Oh, no. Well, this is a Deerfield recreational baseball sign up.
I can do those. I can do those. So twenty-twenty-one Deerfield recreational coed T-ball kindergarten, first grade, um, the uh, the season is here, uh, so you can sign up through the rec department. Um, the department will provide bats, uh, balls, helmets, and a team shirt to be worn at all games. The cost is fifty dollars. Parents must provide a baseball glove, water bottle, face mask, and hand sanitizer. Practices are one night per week, beginning when the fields are ready. The games are to be determined. Um, for those uh children grades one who are interested in playing rookie baseball, your coach from last year must recommend you uh to the recreation director. Um, let's see, so these, uh, let me just look at the date. So registrations are accepted March first through March thirty-first. So, and you can get registration forms online at deerfieldma.us slash backslash recreation, or forms can be mailed uh to Deerfield Recreation Department, Eight Conway Street, South Deerfield, or dropped off in the drop box. Um, please make checks available to Town of Deerfield. Um, you can always get in touch with Sue Antonellis. Uh, she's at recdepartment@town.deerfieldMA.us, or you can call her at six-six-five-one-four-oh-oh, extension one-oh-seven. I'll just go through a couple other things. So also Deerfield Rec Baseball, that was, you know, that was the younger kids. Deerfield uh Rec Baseball is also um, ready. So I'm gonna read this because there's a lot to it this year. Welcome to uh the twenty-twenty-one baseball, the year of changing protocols, fast mate, uh, face masks, social distancing, uh sanitizing cleaners, um, with vaccinations and greatly reduced COVID numbers. We're going to try and have baseball season this year. The Deerfield Board of Health has given us the go to start the registration process. Just realized that everything could change at any time, which is true. Deerfield Recreation Department provides comprehensive recreation programming for the community. The team concept um provides a fun environment to learn skills and fundamentals. There, uh, though there may be some exceptions based on roster numbers and ability, we believe the following grades, not age, are appropriate. Our uh baseball program offers three levels of play: T-ball, grades kindergarten and first, rookie, which is grade second, minor, grade three and four, and some fifth grade. The progression through the levels is achieved by mastering fundamental skills. Coaches will be teaching these skills in a progressive manner, building upon skills learned in previous sessions. The success of our program depends on volunteers. We encourage you to volunteer as a coach or an assistant, and that is really important. Um, it really takes parents to step up and help. I mean, you don't have to be a master baseball player or professional. The kids just need you there. And, and if you can take a season and help out, even if you don't have any kids and you just want to give back some time, it really, it's so important to the kids to have a coach there, um, and really important to the program. So, um, there's T-ball, great, grade one, uh, great, uh, kindergarten one, and I already read through this, grade second, rookie is second grade and some of first grade. Um, so again, registrations are being accepted March first through the thirty-first through the same things. Um, let's see, so the cost, uh, this is the most, uh, let's see. So everything is again fifty dollars. Um, then minor league grades three, four, and five. This is the most advanced instructional level of play. Umpires will be used. Coaches will be working on hitting, fielding, throwing skills. Pitching and catching mechanics will be introduced. We highly recommend that grade four players and some fifth grade players play at minor level uh to continue development skills. That cost is sixty dollars. School choice uni- uh, students, please add twenty-five dollars to all levels. So it'd be seventy-five or um eighty-five. So, and then Frontier Girls Softball League, same kind of setup. Um, so registration at the same time, fifty dollars, all of that is the same. And their program is for girls grades two through six. Their league consists of Conway, Deerfield, Sunderland, and Waitley. In the past, we've mixed up girls from all four towns. This year, we are going to try and keep the girls from each town on the same team. We will probably have to mix the Conway and Waitley girls, you know, because of um number of girls on each team. Conway girls will register with Deerfield uh Recreation. Um, our hopes to have one or two practices per week, one game per week for six to eight weeks. Um, and they will follow all the current protocols. So again, please sign up your kids uh to play some ball this year. I'm done. Thank you.
Um, I just want to say, uh, so far, uh, softball and baseball are considered moderate risk. And, um, wait, I'm Scott.
No, you're there. We got you.
Okay. Baseball and softball are considered, okay, baseball and softball are considered moderate risk, and the biggest so far that I can understand, the biggest risk is to the catcher. So, um, we need to be sure that we're, we have to come up with some way to protect the catcher a little bit more, or two, that we had discussion on that. So, um, I, I feel pretty comfortable about going forward with this.
Great, sounds good. So please sign up.
Yes. Um, is there any other selectments, uh, announcements?
Um, I, I will just talk a little bit about COVID vaccines. Um, so I guess, I don't know if we've met since our last clinic, um, but we had a clinic at the Treehouse Brewery, which was very successful. Um, and we're really pressuring the state to do more for us. Um, we hope in the next, uh, the week of the thirteenth or fifteenth, I think it is, um, we're trying to get a lot of teachers done. I'm pushing for a clinic at Treehouse to make sure that we can start doing our teachers. Uh, President Biden had requested that um, the, the month of March be really focused on getting our educators vaccinated so that we can make sure our schools are open and safe. Um, so that is a, a goal we're working on in conjunction with trying to get our seniors and all the people that are, you know, at risk, um, as well, um, vaccinated. It's been uh frustrating beyond belief. Um, and we're hoping in the next three weeks, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine will be out and in more numerous, and it's a one-shot deal. Um, you know, so we're hoping that will ma- be a game changer for us, but i- it has been immensely frustrating the whole process. Um, but we're trying for you. We're all trying really hard. Carolyn is working literally day and night on this, and um, and we are, we're all doing what we can. It was very successful. Treehouse, I just can't thank them enough for loaning us that facility, and, and it was, um, it was flawless. It really went really well. We can do more than we had. So it's just a matter of proving that to the state and getting the state to give us vaccine, and everybody, you know, is short on vaccine. So, so that's, that's kind of all I have to say on that, other than please, you know, I keep seeing cases coming in. So it's not like we're out of the woods because my email dings every morning with cases. Um, and it's not a lot, um, and they're, you know, they are segmented a bit, but they're still happening. So please don't let your guard down. Just because people are getting vaccinated doesn't mean you're safe. Um, it is still happening. Cases are still happening, and, and you never know which one is gonna be the one that's gonna, you know, put you in the hospital. So we want you to be safe, and we're very close. We're very, very close to putting this behind us, but um, you know, we just need your cooperation for a little, little while longer, and we'll get there. So.
Trevor?
Yes.
The reason why this is so important is because the variants that we have right now, the UK variant and the um South African variant are, in fact, um, you know, not any worse than, you know, uh, and, and Johnson and Johnson did, had trials against them and, and did really well. But what we are concerned about, if we don't stay vigilant and wear masks and social distance and, and keep working on vaccinations, the Brazilian variant will reinfect. It doesn't se- it seems to be um not as well um handled by the vaccines, and they have, so far, they can, it can reinfect people. So what we need to do is keep them trans- down very low so that we can not have that. Um, it's rare in the United States at this point, but we can't have it here. And so we, and it won't transmit if people stay vigilant. So please, please keep working on this.
Yep.
Masks, social distancing.
I, I do have one other topic.
I know I sound like a broken record, but it really works, and it's very simple. And it's a pain in the neck, there's no question, but honestly, we just need to do it.
Casey, you wanted to speak to this, and then I, I also have one other comment before we're done to move on.
I, after the um vaccinations, um, last weekend I was talking to John, and we, we talked about preparing a thank you letter for Treehouse directly related to the vaccination. So I had prepared it and put it in as part of your COVID updates, and I wondered if the board was willing to endorse that letter and come and sign it.
Absolutely. Yeah, I read that. Thank you for doing that. Thank you very much. Um, yes, I would make a motion to approve the letter to thank uh Treehouse Brewing for the use of their facility for the clinic.
Dave Wolfram, second.
Any further discussion?
Hearing done. All those in favor?
Trevor McDaniel.
Dave Wolfram, aye.
Carolyn Ness, aye. Robert, or Dave, why don't you just take over this meeting? I mean, this is ridiculous. I can't stand.
Five minutes behind us. No problem at all. Yep, we can do that. Um, the only other, so the other selectmen thing I wanted to talk to you about, because I've been getting some questions on this, um, is the residents on Keller Drive, and this may be in an, in an update later on, uh, but I just wanted to say, while I had a few minutes, I've talked to Kevin. Um, we have been waiting on a piece of culvert um to come in, and there was one piece, and, and it's been backordered. It is, I believe it's here uh by Monday or something like that. We're gonna get started uh finishing that last piece. They just gotta get the settings, uh, footings in. The weather should be good next week. It looks like in the sixties, you know, midweek, which would be wonderful for everybody, uh, but it'll be good for the site. So I think they'll be able to get some work done there and uh move along. I know that, you know, it won't be completed with guardrails and, and uh new pavement until we get some decent weather in the spring, but at least the, the infrastructure will be done and completed, and hopefully we can get some cleanup done and some of the equipment out of there. But I know they're due to come back this coming week. I think they were there today for a little bit, too. I don't know if they're gonna be there tomorrow, but on Saturday, but I think, you know, by next week, you know, within the next couple of weeks here, that should be cleaning up a whole lot better. And we just apologize to the residents of, of Keller Drive. It has been a nightmare. Everything that's gone wrong, could go wrong, did go wrong on that job, and um, just fighting, fighting with the contractors on that. So, um, I just wanted to give an update, you know, verbally on that. So w- we're aware of it, and we're pushing on it hard to get it done.
Said it better than I could, Trevor.
Oh, good.
Yes, they were out there, and Kevin did speak to them this afternoon before he left.
Yep, yep. So, um, I think that's all, that's all I had for, for discussion. I don't know, Dave, do you have anything that you, anybody else wants to talk about?
No, I just uh wanted to get back to the COVID just a little bit.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Dave.
Um, you know, have people understand that, you know, even if the shots aren't a hundred percent effective, they're gonna keep you out of the hospital.
Right.
And gonna keep you from dying.
Yep.
So, you know, it's important that people get that shot.
Yes.
You know, whether it's the Johnson and Johnson, or the Moderna that we're using, uh, but, you know, it's important. Uh, you know, it's important that we, you know, you.
Yep.
You know, I know we're working with Charlie, uh, trying to make sure that we get all the teachers vaccinated, uh, which is very important because we do have to get those schools to open back up. And that's the only way we're gonna get the economy rolling again.
Right. Yep, absolutely. Um, yes, go ahead.
Um, Rocky? For the seniors that didn't get, uh, didn't get to the clinic and everything like that, I just want to commend the staff at this uh South County uh seniors.
Yes.
They've been going, they've been bending, bending over backwards and going out of the way to help other uh seniors that couldn't get in there, get appointments in some of these other sites.
Yes.
I just want to commend them for uh trying really, really hard.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Rocky. It's true. They have, you know, even if we couldn't get into ours, they have worked hard to get them into, you know, Big Wire, CVS, and I, you know, Sharon's been doing a lot of work. Christina, Meg, everybody, Sue, they've all been working really hard to try and get our seniors. Um, you know, if it's not through ours, it's, it's through another one, because it really doesn't matter where it is. It doesn't have to be our clinic. I just want them in somewhere to get a shot. So, um, and, and again, I, I've been told that hopefully by the third week in March, we'll see a lot more Johnson and Johnson coming to the state, and maybe that'll get us a lot more doses to get moving on stuff. But it, it, the, the path from the state to, you know, the, the state has chosen, and the federal government has chosen to use the profit method instead of local boards of health who've trained for fifteen years how to do this. They've decided to give it to, you know, CVS and Walgreens and everywhere where you don't have s- space to sit, and you don't have an EMS person to watch over you to make sure you're safe. They just, you know, it's, it's for the profit, and it just drives me so angry on this whole thing of how they're distributing it, why they're doing it that way, and why they're not using local boards of health who know our seniors, who know our people, and have trained for this for so many years. I don't know how many nights Carolyn and everybody has given up to train for this, and then to just bypass it. Uh, I'm so frustrated, I'm so frustrated, and I can't wait for a ballot box, I'll tell you that. So, um, that's that. So, sorry, definitely go off on a tangent. Um, if there's, uh, let's see, other than, if there's any other COVID stuff, we can come back to that, or, or. if there's, uh, let's see, uh, other than if there's any other COVID stuff, we can come back to that or, or speak up, but I was, um, there were, there was the update on buy recycled memo and policy for approval and signature. Casey, did you wanna hit on that a little bit?
Yes, it's every year, DEP as part of their requirements for certain grant programs that we participate in. They request that we update our, we call it the buy recycled memo. And the buy recycled policy that we send out to departments about how they should be, what they should be buying for, for recycled products. And there's a variety of recycled products and a variety of content based on, on what it is you're looking for. And so we got specific language from Franklin County Solid Waste Management District, who helps us with quite a bit of our grants. Jan sent over some adjusted language that DEP would like to see. So Pat updated the memo and I, I, um, made it look all pretty because formatting is something that I try to do. Um, so we went through it, the two of us, and the memo that is presented in your packet reflects that updated language. So, one, we need a memo that says, please do this, and these are the reasons why. And two, you need the policy itself that defines what the expectations are. So if you could vote to approve that and sign it your earliest convenience, we would appreciate it or allow us to use your signature stamps if that would be easier.
Sure. So I, I, I think it's a great program. I'll just read this a little bit. The public gets to know. So recycle project, uh, product purchasing policy, whereas the town recognizes the need to make more efficient use of our natural resources and create markets, uh, for the materials collected in recycling programs. And whereas the town can support recycling activities by purchasing more products made of recycled materials when such products meet quality requirements and are available at reasonable prices and terms. Now therefore, the town of Deerfield hereby adopts the following recycled product purchasing policy to the maximum extent practicable and consistent with the demands of efficiency and cost effectiveness. All town employees with purchasing authority shall adhere to the following standards. One, all purchases of paper products, including but not limited to paper copy, uh, excuse me, copy papers, stationary envelopes, notepads and file folders shall meet a minimum of thirty percent post-consumer. The decision not to procure recycled content, paper products, meeting this standard shall be based solely on the determination that the items are not available within a reasonable time period, or that items fail to meet reasonable performance standards, or are only available at an unreasonable price. So by every effort possible, uh, purchase them. When, uh, purchasing office custodial and maintenance products or any other products, uh, purchased by a town employee for town use, due uh, consideration will be given to purchase said products in a form containing recycled content material. Dead recycle, uh, must be competitively priced and of comparable quality, performance and availability. And three town employees shall, uh, let's see, town employees with purchasing authority shall become familiar with and utilize Massachusetts state contracts for recycled products and make purchases through the state contract whenever feasible. So I would make a motion to approve that policy.
Dave Wolf from second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Dave Wolf from I.
Trevor McDaniel, I.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
She's gonna say it.
She's gonna say it.
She's gonna say it. Okay, well, at least two carry the boat.
Carolyn Ness, I.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
I said yes.
I know, we got you.
We, it was a question of how long it took for us to hear your yes.
They, she'll hear that, she'll hear that explanation in a minute.
Yeah, I think they put, put that yes.
I said yes. I said yes.
She hasn't quite figured out she's on an hour, like a.
I'm about to write a ticket for her.
What is going on tonight? I know, this is so.
Just go outside her front door and yell.
I know.
Yeah.
This is awful.
I think it may be buffering on your computer, Carolyn, so I'm gonna write a ticket.
Yes.
For you for Northeast I T.
Okay.
Um, let's see, so, okay, so the next item on the agenda, let's just, we're gonna move the meeting along here because it's six. Um, so it's appointments, resignations, appointments, hires, oh, DPW admin position. So we've been working as a town for probably a year or more, working to get, uh, some admin help in the DPW department. We had worked with the personnel committee, um, and we've worked with DPW and Kevin to try and come up with, um, a part-time position to help with paying bills and doing all the admin work to, um, for Kevin and the DPW department and Casey and, um, uh, Kevin and, and, uh, Brenda Hill, our town accountant, had been working together and had placed, uh, had interviews and those interviews, um, they had three, uh, qualified people and, um, they would all be good for Deerfield, but they did settle on one. And do you want to take it from there, Casey? Cause I might mess this up. I'm gonna take it where you.
That's fine. Um, so we did conducted a search process and this part-time position is budgeted at up to fifteen hours per week. Eighteen thirty per hour. And throughout that interview process, um, one candidate brings unique qualifications to the position. Um, Diane Cornwell is a retired Berniston Senior Center Director. She has significant experience in municipal government, excellent communication and strong organizational skills and an understanding of the need for attention to detail that we increasingly encounter as we work in our, in our field. So we believe she's ideally suited to this position. And so it is our recommendation that the select board vote to hire Mrs. Cornwell at the part-time administrative assistant, as the part-time administrative assistant to the DPW superintendent, sorry. Authorizing the town administrator to complete this hiring process. Completion of the hiring process includes a letter of, an offer letter that would be, include the, the details of the position, budget, hours, um, that, that would be presented to Mrs. Cornwell and she would sign off and return it. And then we would work with the treasurer to collect all the information we would need to hire her.
Great. I, I would just say, I know, um, Diane Cornwell through the work, she helped us with the senior center when, um, when we were trying to put that budget together and Christina was new and I think just getting hired. And so it was great to have her help and she helped a bit with the plan, uh, for kind of revisioning the, uh, the senior center and, and, and working on the budgets and the funding for that. So I had some good, good communication and work with her. So I was really excited to hear she was applying and then, um, I was thrilled to find out and not surprised though that she, uh, rose to the top because she is an excellent, excellent candidate for this work and very happy to hear that. So I would make a motion to, uh, approve the, um, the hiring of Ms. Cornwall, Mrs. Cornwall for the part-time position as assistant, as administrative assistant to, to the DPW superintendent.
Dave Wolf from second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Dave Wolf from I.
Trevor McDaniel. Let's wait.
Yes, Carolyn.
We got it. Right.
I swear, he said yes.
We heard you.
We know. It's just, um, okay, great. That's great. So, uh, that is all set. Um, any, Casey, do, oh, we do have some mail and I, I do want to go through that quick and, and this is really for us to read, but I wanted to make a couple of comments first and I, um, so there, there are important things in our mail to this week, which is the planning board proposed by law changes. They have some here that are significant. We need to, uh, voice our opinion on accessory apartment, solar, formula-based business and site plan review. And then there's a letter also in our mail, um, the FERCog meeting notes on outdoor recreation on the Deerfield River. So we should take the week and read that and then have some more discussion next week on these items. But, um, I would just say, um, I'm, I'm concerned on the bylaws immensely. There, there are some that I'm very, you know, the aspects of some of them I have some, a real problem with. But, um, so for the, the accessory apartment bylaw, I just, I wanna understand. I think it's important. I've asked for this and I'm, I'm really excited it's happening. I just, there's, there's some questions I have as far as, you know, um, it can only be half this floor size of the existing one or nine thousand, nine hundred square feet. I'm not sure that's gonna be large enough for, you know, maybe some, I, I'm just not sure why the size issues. Um, and then yeah, there's quite a few things that I'd like to formulate questions on, like, um, there, there was an accessory apartment shall not be occupied by more than three unrelated adult residents. Uh, who's supposed to decide and go in and check people, people's, you know, how do you know they're not registered, you know, relatives? Um, I, I just submit some, uh, enforcement issues that I think are, we're saddling our building inspector with that, that seem to be outside, um, outside the aspects of what we truly want them doing. Uh, but, and then, um, so I have questions on that.
Actually, the accessory apartments originally were supposed to be in-law apartments, right?
Yeah, yep.
And not just a income source.
Right. Yep, yep. I mean, that's, I, I envision this as more, uh, that I wanted people to be able to have their relatives live with them. Um, you know, when mom gets older or something, dad's gone and they need to take care of her. They can put an addition on the house and maintain that with her in there. Um, or, um, you know, uh, family members on hard times, but they're gonna expand a little bit on their house and add a, add a bedroom on and a kitchen on. And then, you know, families need to be together more often, especially nowadays, taking care of kids with all this, you know, with COVID going on and even with the economic turmoil. I think that, you know, we used to be a country where multiple generations lived together and, and survived together. And that's the only way they could survive is each taking care of each other. And we've gotten to this point where we're building McMansions everywhere and they're gigantic places and you need massive road frontage and you, you don't, you know, um, I, I think it's a waste of resources and I think, um, you know, we're separating people so much, um, on these big chunks of land with no, um, no ability to live together. Uh, so I think, I think it's important to make these changes and I'm glad they're doing that. But I, I just have some questions on some of those items. And then, um, I do have some questions on the solar, uh, problem. I, my biggest problem with this is, um, hold on casting a shadow on people's property. Um, you know, we're restricting people's ability if they buy a piece of land to build a house, um, and, and of any size that they're choosing. If they want to build a, a colonial on there, if it casts more than a, you know, a, a eight-foot shadow on the northern section of their property, they're not allowed to build it. I, I have a real problem with that. I just, I, I'm not sure, um, I understand the intention, but I'm really concerned about what we're doing as far as limiting people's access. And that, that's a taking by the town. It's saying we're supporting this bylaw and we're saying that this property is no longer buildable because you've, you know, because somebody may cast a shadow on a section of the property. So I'm, I'm, I'm concerned. I understand the need for making sure that you have access to the sun for solar, but you know, those are some of the decisions you make when you're looking at a piece of property. I, I don't know. I just, I'm concerned about that whole section and how, how enforceable that is. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering about all of these bylaws, are these being reviewed by attorneys? Um, where are we at with any of this stuff? Casey, can you answer it? Does, um, is Lisa involved with this process or is it something we're gonna find out last minute that, you know, none of this is, uh, is doable?
So that's a very good question. I appreciate you asking it because generally what we do in terms of managing the budget, but also managing the work when it comes to legal services is we wait till we have a more substantially complete bylaw, um, draft to look at. And so the one that I think is most substantially complete is formula-based business, which council has, we've, we've sent to council, but not with the revisions. Um, these other three had been working through the continual process with planning board since their inception. And so one of the things that I said to you a few weeks ago was I would try to keep getting this information out to you.
Yeah.
That is a question is once we get to the substantially complete language, legal counsel will review it.
Right.
Um, so I guess my question is, is that would be my normal process? Is there a process you'd like me to change?
I think, no, I think that's good. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, before we spend so much time on this, that, that some of this is reviewed.
Okay. All right, I will reach out to Lisa.
What, what are the unintended, unintended consequences? The formula-based, uh, business bylaw, I am so not in favor of. I, I, I think, I think it's a horrible piece of legislation. I don't want to see it in Deerfield. Um, I just, I am, it's so un-American and, um, I, I, you know, I understand the intention of wanting to control what your town looks like through zoning. But, um, you know, businesses spend a lot of money to get, um, to build their brand, um, and, and this is a, you know, if I was, and if I was a business coming to town and I saw this bylaw on the books, I would turn and run. I would be not interested in bill, bringing my business to Deerfield. This is a big, you know, thank you, no thank you. We don't want you in Deerfield unless you follow all of our guidelines. Um, I, I, or you know, you can't, if anybody takes the time to read this, I really implore the public to understand what this is saying. That you cannot have any business that, that, um, much as formula-based business, a type of retail business establishment or a restaurant, tavern, bar or other food service establishment, which is under common ownership or control or is a franchise and is one of ten or more businesses establishments worldwide maintaining any of the following features. So if you have six of these features, any one of the six features, you are, uh, the following six features, you cannot, uh, you are a formula-based business and now are restricted from doing any of these things. You can't have the same uniforms. You can't have the same sign on your, on the building on the outside. Or you may have the same sign, but you can't have the same sign in the same menu or the same sign in the same, you know, um, attire for businesses. I think it's just, it's, I, I just think it's completely un-American and it's not, I don't see it, see it as division of Deerfield. I may be in the minority, but I am so against this thing completely. I understand where it's coming from. But that's just my two cents on it. I, I'd, I'd like to see this revisited some other way.
My, my reading of it, the subtext to me is that they're trying to limit so we don't have any commercial growth within the town of Deerfield.
Yep.
And that is not a realistic, uh, expectation. Uh, those of us that are involved with the budget and stuff know that the commercial part carries an important part of our budget.
Yeah.
We stop, that means your residential taxes are gonna go right out of sight. And, you know, you've gotta balance these things. You know, we have, gotta have responsible growth. Uh, but we have to have that growth. Quite frankly, Treehouse might not even come to town if this stuff was in place.
Yeah. Yep.
And Treehouse is gonna be an asset for us. Uh, you know, they've already demonstrated how, how community oriented they are. And, you know, um, Dean is, uh, very personable and has work come forward and wants to do everything that they can for this town.
Yep.
And that's what responsible growth is.
It is, and they'll come with problems and there's no doubt that there'll be issues that we'll need to address, but we have tools to do that. And if you need stronger tools, let's look at them. But this saying, you know, that we're gonna, we're gonna label businesses a specific way and then regulate them because they have more than ten in the, in worldwide. It just, it, you know, people, businesses, they start out small, you know, and they try to grow and they try to, you know, they produce a lot of jobs for people. And I think, um, it's just taking a really negative view at business and I, 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 I'm just so against it. If you need some other specific language or through zoning changes or something to make sure that, um, that you're not getting a specific, you know, toxic waste dump in your building, in your, in your town or some, something other than, you know, this is, this is America and it's commercial. I mean, that's just, it, we have to face the fact that that's what this country is and it's how we pay our bills. Um, and, and.
You know, the other, the other thing it's, to me, and you know, maybe I'm reading it wrong and here again, the attorneys will make that determination. But by the way this is written, they're essentially saying it can't be appealed to the zoning board of appeals.
Mm-hmm.
Their decision is final unless it goes to land court. And that's not what, we have a checks and balances here. We have a political arm and a non-political arm that review these things.
Yep. Yeah.
Here again, like I said, I may be reading it wrong, but that's my interpretation of it.
Right. Yep. Yep. I I'm just very keen about it. I. Maybe, I I understand the intention. I really do. I get where you wanna have some control over what comes into your town and not, but. This is, I don't think is the right answer, so.
No.
Um, and the last, uh, remember the last piece of.
Deerfield River Outdoor Recreation.
Oh, yes, yeah. Oh, oh, the, well, the, the Deerfield proposed amendments to site plan review.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I have not read that. That kinda came up out of nowhere, uh, as far as I was concerned.
I just wanted to mention, um. Yeah.
She's waiting, I think.
Oh, I, the one thing I wanted to just bring up is that we were talking about, um. Um. The pandemic is continuing, so we have the, uh, BBC and, um. You know, different restaurants, Johnny Figs, they wanna have outdoors still. So, um, uh, we don't have to take a formal vote. It wasn't on the agenda. But I wanted to make sure that you both agreed with Dick and I, um. Feeling like anybody that wants to be outside, continue to be outside.
So, yes.
And it's for public health reasons. Um, if people do in fact want to, um. Have this continue once the pandemic is over, then we're gonna have to. Can I put it in the chat box?
Yeah.
That I wanna just make sure Dave, it's okay, okay.
Yeah, I got it. So, so really.
Ask if it's okay with.
This is torture. Um, so, yes, um, I I will, uh. I will just clarify for everybody. I was talking with Dick.
Code.
Right, I did, yeah. I was talking with Dick today too and, uh, uh, I think that, uh, Dick's had some questions whether the Wolfies could continue. You know, when the weather permitted to be continuing outside, uh, dining, um. And we, we wanna encourage that. So businesses that still wanna serve people outside. Because the pandemic is still going on, we wanna encourage that work and I think we need to do, we do need to look at our bylaws. I think it's important to do long-term, but. Um, but we do need to look at how we handle alcohol consumption ex- out outside. Um, and that's kind of the issue right now is that we're allowing it because of the pandemic and we can get people outside. It's safer, but, um. So, you know, what, as the pandemic comes to a close and as we work on this, we wanna look at, um, our bylaws to make sure that we. Regulate it and it's safe for the public for outside consumption of alcohol while eating. Um, you know, while you're serving, I think it makes sense as a restaurant kind of. Kind of thing. So I'm okay with just kind of letting it go. I don't think we're gonna take a vote or anything, but we were just gonna. Reiterate, you know, to Dick through this meeting tonight that, um, w- we understand because of the pandemic, we are continuing outside dining. You know, until, you know, a date uncertain at this point, um, till it, till the pandemic's over. How do you feel about that, Dave?
I'm totally in favor of it.
Okay, great.
That's, uh, I think that. What we're seeing right now is gonna be long-term. Not just because of the pandemic, but people like to eat outside.
Yep.
And I think, you know, as we, looking at the center of Deerfield.
Yeah, I agree.
We can do things to enhance that.
Yes.
Whether it's by, you know, enhanced parking at the Leary Lot, uh, and. You know, there's a number of things that we, you know, I know that you've been working on that, you know, this is gonna make. The center of Deerfield, once we get rid of Cumberland Farm.
Yep.
Lot, a very attractive place to be and to come to.
Yeah. Yep, for sure. Yep, that's what we're hoping. So I think, um, so everybody should.
Think we should take a road trip to Portsmouth and see what they did up there.
I agree. I think it's worth doing. I think we really should investigate.
You look at a city that was in pretty much disarray not that many years ago and what they've done up there.
Yep.
And we can do it here in Deerfield, a lot smaller footprint, but we can still do that here.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Definitely should, should take some field trips and look at that stuff. Um, so I guess we'll, we should look at all of our, um. I guess the main thing is to look at all of the stuff that's in the mail. There's a lot in there. There's all the bylaw stuff and I wanna have. Some, um, some clearly thought out things to send back to the planning board and to town meeting when it gets there. Um, on that item. And then there's the, the other large item was the, um, fur cog had, uh. I think there was a meeting recently about the recreation on the Deerfield River. This is not just a Deerfield thing. It's not just a Charlemont thing. It's. All up and down. It's, you know, thousands of people come out of the cities to, to tube and drink and. All kinds of stuff up and down the Deerfield River and they cause havoc for our neighbors and our residents along the river. Um, and there's a lot of trash and and, you know, erosion of the, of the riverbank and. There's just all kinds of stuff to work on and this looks like it's a pretty comprehensive list of things that. People have come up with and I just haven't been involved enough. I know this has been a. A issue of Carolyn, she's been working on for many years as well and we're trying to find some sort of. Solution where all the towns up and down from Charlemont Row all the way down through. To Deerfield where the, where the bottom of the, of the bowl where everybody stops, um, we all work together. Uh, with and and address, um, DEP and and the state and, um. All this together as one group. So there's meetings going on about that. I wasn't able to, if some of these attend during the day and I just can't get to them. During the day, but, um. So let's read all this stuff and and circle back on it, I guess, um. There's, there's a lot of stuff to look at here.
Yeah.
Yep.
All of a sudden, my computer went dead, you guys.
So I'm. Okay, that means you can bring it to me and we can try to get it fixed, Carolyn.
Okay.
I was gonna ask anyway, but.
Well, at least you're not on delay right now.
Yeah.
I wanna better.
Now I can talk. Now you're sorry. We just added another hour to the meeting, right?
Oh, wait a minute, my computer's shutting down. Sorry.
So was the computer in the back of your vehicle?
No, no.
Oh, that's right. Oh, no, we were hoping that, that, did it put the vehicle out of commission? Tell me it did.
No, no, no damage, no nothing.
Of course there was no damage to it.
It's a tank.
It's a tank.
The other, the other bumper is the one that. Person that hit me, kill, kill ended me is the one.
They're totaled. Yeah, they're totaled, I'm sure.
Has a tank.
Gosh.
Oh, Lord. We could bet.
All right.
Okay.
Oh, this has been a long enough meeting for Friday night. Does anybody have anything else?
Yes, please.
Oh, please, go ahead, sure.
Okay, finance committees, next meeting is three sixteen twenty twenty-one at five P M. I recommend that the board. Consider attending. The treasure collector town clerk and the DPW superintendent will be presenting their budgets. It might be useful to.
Yeah.
Hear that conversation.
What time was that?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, okay, on the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth.
Um, I also just wanna mention, I, uh, attended, um, a webinar. Yes, yesterday on, um, federal, tracking federal relief funds for. Um, school districts and, you know, municipalities and, um.
Right.
We do not have to worry about, um, deficit spending on the. And and then having our money of, you know, free cash affected by FEMA or. Um, the COVID CARES Act or this new one that's coming. Um, Sean, Sean Cronin from, um, the Department of Revenue. Is going to send out memos on this, but, um, is lo- the money, you know, what's gonna happen, it, it's. Obviously, it's federal, so it's a federal timeline and, um. And, you know, which is a different budget year than our budget years and.
Yep.
And all that kind of stuff, but it was very clear that they understood that we were not, our free cash was not to be affected by.
Oh, that's cool.
Either the deficit spending or the extra money. So, yeah, it's very good. So, I'm very pleased and. And, um, there is a, you know, website that you can go to and you can put in calculations and stuff like that and. Um, and it, and they recommended it's. The FEMA, um, reimbursements are coming faster than normal, but it's still slow and it's a hundred percent though. And it, w- would they up it to a hundred percent and it is coming, so chances are we will get money before. Um, June thirtieth.
That'd be great.
And Casey actually reached out, they recommended reaching out to Mima and Casey actually did reach out to Mima, our rep. And, um, they're tracking it, right, Casey?
Yes, there, I reached out yesterday. I got a response today. Um, we are in a seven-part process for one project. Um, a little bit further along and we have two projects out there for FEMA. And they directly correlate to some of the CARES Act grant funds which are coming through the state. So, until we have a firm idea. What this, the feds are gonna pay for, it impacts our CARES Act fund. So I did, I had reached out periodically about this. And we're, we're in the queue. It's just the queue. I'm hoping the queue after what Carolyn told me last night, which she just told you. Hoping the queue will move along faster.
Great. And I know you just had to put in a CARES report today.
Yes, we just turned in the CARES Act report for the last quarter of twenty twenty.
I know that's a lot of work, so thank you to, you know, you and Brenda and.
Brenda did.
Yeah.
Forty of that, but we coordinate with the gentleman that works, we've been working with on the FEMA because those reports correlate.
Yep.
Just the responsibility of the actual upload and stuff, so she, I work pretty closely on that.
Thank you.
I had a couple of other things, so I don't know if you saw my email. I sent a forward or I forwarded an email I received from Senator Comerford. About early voting.
Okay.
It would, and then I had a conversation with Barbara about what we could expect. Barbara, I think we can expect to see the legislature vote on early voting next week. So Barbara would like some time with you on the twenty-fourth to discuss her plans related to early voting.
Right.
So we've scheduled her on that meeting agenda.
That'd be great. I did talk to her too a little bit today and we, we were thinking we would. Continue with the, um, you know. Early, if, if, if allowed, continue as we did last time with early voting, uh, by, by mail. Um, or Dropbox, that kind of thing. It doesn't need to be in person. Um, they can certainly come in in person and drop it off in the mailbox, but just to keep the. The risk of transmission down, um, but, um. So, and I think most of this stuff will continue on like we had last time, so, um, but yeah, so she'll speak to us unless we wind up with a meeting before the twenty-fourth.
Well, she also has loan documents that she'll wanna speak to you about as well.
Okay, great.
We already had her on for one discussion item, now it's two.
Okay.
Um, and she seemed okay with the twenty-fourth. Um, I'm continuing to work and I had, wasn't able to finish it this afternoon. I'm hoping Jack Davey isn't mad at me. Um, I'm continuing to work on the capital improvement planning committees revisions to the plan itself. And I have some more information that I'll start inputting, but one thing I wanted to let everybody know is I've been working with Civic Plus about the web. Website. They're our web host.
Mm-hmm.
Group and they put together a subscription proposal that would give us a little more flexibility. In how we do revisions to the website, what we have, what the transition to a new platform might look like. And would give us a little more flexibility. So I'm reviewing that proposal and.
Okay.
Should have some more information next week.
All right.
Um, the other thing is, is so the. Finance committee's meeting on the sixteenth and we had tentatively talked the board, I mean. Sort of to me and, um, John Pachurak about this next meeting around the North Main Street Park. And I think a date that we could do it is the eighteenth of March, but I wanted to get the board's feedback on that. While I had you all in the same meeting, so as the town administrator, I'm throwing out the question. Because we would wanna start publicizing that if we wanna do that. I know that David probably already has a conflict with it based on what I see for his schedule.
Yeah, I. Probably would be available. I just, um, wanted to get a little more information before we had another meeting, but, um. That's all.
Well, why don't you, we have a, we have a few days before I would wanna actually get something out, so, uh, why don't you circle back around with John?
Okay, I'll do that. I'll do that for sure.
I wanted, Trevor, I wanted more public comment. That was why I wanted more meeting, another meeting.
Yeah.
I just, I felt like we needed more public comment.
Yeah, I think we do too. I just.
Yeah, I mean, we just don't. I mean, there's, we got some ideas from the last meeting.
Yeah.
Then people can see them. I think they need to have more input again.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for more meetings too. I just, um. Yeah, I have, wanted to get a couple of other things figured out too, in the meantime, about that site, so.
Well, we wanna, we wanna make sure that people have a opportunity to think about it because, I mean, once we commit. To what we want, you know, um, it's gonna be really hard if people start complaining afterwards, so it's better to have more input.
Yeah.
Um, gosh, there was some other thing that I really wanted to talk about and now I completely forgot.
If you give me a half a sec, I can interrupt and maybe it'll come back to you. I have one, one other thing that I almost realized I didn't mention. So I may send out a request for executive session for. A litigation situation for the select board depending on information I get next week, um, around the EBI consulting.
Okay.
I'm waiting for some more information and then I'm gonna reach out to the board.
All right, again, another contractor that's been giving us a hard time. I wanna make sure we're moving forward, so sooner than better, Casey.
Yes, I'm just waiting for a response from, on, on a question we had yesterday.
Okay.
And, um, actually I thought, just remembered what it was, um, the March twenty-fifth meeting. For the five county flex board meeting.
Yes.
On, um, police reform. Is that moving forward, Trevor? I haven't seen anything yet.
I, I believe so. I could have to check with John, um, Edwards. And and everybody. I I haven't, I've really been checked out of that a bit too, with everything going on with the vaccines. I just. Been consumed.
I know.
Um.
Yeah, the vaccine clinic, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Yes.
That's true.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, but this was, this was the, at night.
At night, six o'clock. I believe it's on. I believe it is. I've, I've seen emails from John recently, so, Casey?
I, actually, John and I had that conversation when I asked him a question related to Stam, cuz my Stam group is very interested in police reform too. And so I think Jonathan, and I'm, I'm hoping we'll hear from him next week, but I think Jonathan was on vacation.
He was this week, yep.
He may, he may be circling back around to that next week.
Yep, yep, for sure.
Okay. Um, also, um. The fur cog got five hundred doses total for, even though they requested, they require, orange is now part of our region. They requested six hundred for orange, eight hundred for Montague, and I think fifteen hundred for Greenfield and they got five, five hundred. This is the next week, so.
Total.
There's.
For all of, for everything, for Greenfield and everything?
Um, well, Tracy didn't text me back cuz I wanted to know what. She just said five hundred doses for Greenfield, uh, for, um, Montague and and orange. So I text her and she, did Greenfield get any? And then she hasn't texted me back on that, so. Um.
Okay. Cuz those.
They still need to, I'm, I'm still gonna send an email out that they. Need to put us in, it doesn't matter if they don't, if we don't get it, but they need to request it and they're not requesting it. And that's an issue. Um, and, and, and then two or three weeks, we're gonna start seeing lots of vaccines and it's, but it's frustrating right now that. We're not even in the mix, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I know we've been talking about it. We don't need to rehash it, but I just got the text on that. I just came in.
Okay, I wondered about what, what will we get? If that's five hundred for, for, for just for, for a cog to split up between orange and Montague?
Yep, I guess so, but we've been in the queue for a long time, so why isn't. Yes, they, they're gonna be ordering that, um. Next week. So we need to have them order our five hundred second doses, but we need them to order more. So we can start doing some more first doses.
Yep.
And. You know, so, anyway, I'm, I'm just, I will send you all an email. Um, I mean, I will CC you on the email. I sent to Linda.
All right.
Um, uh, C- CC Tom and Jonathan and. Bob Armstrong and just so they're in the loop too, okay?
Okay. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Or any public comment, sorry. Yeah. Anybody want to say anything?
Well, then I will make the motion to adjourn.
All right, sounds good. Um, any further discussion? Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Rocky, for always being here. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Carolyn, for getting on the phone. Helped at the end.
Yeah, that was pretty painful. Oh, sorry.
No worries. Yep. All right. Night, everybody. All, all those in favor? I, Trevor McDaniel?
Hi, Dave Wolfram.
Hi, Carolyn.
Okay. Hey, good night, everybody. Thank you, Casey. All right.